Oh yeah, just over and over and over again, yeah. Morning, everybody. Like to bring the Commissioners' meeting to order on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. We've got Reverend Turner here this morning from Christendom Methodist Church of Washington. Did come up to the podium and give a prayer this morning?
Morning.
Good morning. Let's pray together. Oh God, so many decisions. So many opportunities to serve, whether as a church or in government. Lest, oh God, to remember that we serve all people in all places, and that we are to be your servants in all places to all people. And so, God, I ask a blessing on this meeting, on those who make the decisions, that they would be wise, that they would be the best stewards of the opportunities presented. Bless all people who come into this room, into this building, God, into our city. And so, all these things, we pray in the name of our Christ. All of God's people sit. Amen.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. Alright, we've got the meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 27th. You got a chance to let those over on?
Yeah. I wasn't here, but oh, I see no additions or additions.
Alright. Look for a motion to approve.
Still move.
Got a motion by Ron on him. I'll second that. All in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. We're at the Highway Department. There was no highway meeting this morning at the Highway Department. Morning, Chris. Might as well just come up here. Have a seat beside Grant here. We got a pile, pile of stuff.
Okay, so at a prior meeting.
Yep.
At a prior meeting, I think we announced that we were going to be putting the bid packets out. We have a number of bids today. I think this is Chris's first time.
Maybe second time, but it feels like first time every time.
Um, so bear with us. Uh, we've got seventeen bids here. We've got at least ten items that are up for bid. Okay. Guys here. Phil, good to see you. Okay. Thank you for numbering these and getting these organized. We're just gonna go down through it. If there are things that you want to point out and read, um, go ahead and do that. Typically, what we do in this county is take it under advisement. The county highway supervisor organizes it, and then the Commissioners will at a later date make a decision on who was the preferred bid. It's for ENH Bridge and Grading.
Alright. We've got to have it in public meetings, so it's gotta be the highway area here.
Is ENH here? Their bridge material applies.
Another twenty-four foot wide by twenty foot long. Two thousand forty-six dollars, fifty-five cents per lineal foot. Uh, their four-inch metal grid decking, thirty-four dollars, ninety-four cents per square foot. Guard rail posts, one hundred and fifty-five dollars each, with the rails, two hundred dollars. Put that back with that, or?
Put it with. Just goes with this one? Number two, Hustler Enterprises.
Typically good. Lubricating oil grease and antifreeze, ten W thirty SAE, uh, twelve-ten per gallon.
Hustler here.
Hydraulic oil, the bulk, nine thirty-four per gallon. Antifreeze, uh, the drums, seven forty-five per gallon. I'll just do three on that one.
Okay. This for asphalt materials?
So there, for asphalt and emulsions, your AE ninety S, two ninety-seven a gallon. Your AETL, uh, two sixty-two a gallon. Your SS one H Tac, two sixty-two a gallon. PG binder, sixty-four twenty-two, uh, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents a ton. I think that's it.
This is number four, Saint Regis Culvert Inc. That encloses item number two, Culvert types and other structures.
Okay, your galvanized corrugated steel pipe. Twelve inch, thirteen fifty-eight a foot. Twenty-four inch, twenty-five eighty a foot. Forty-eight inch, fifty-two oh two a foot. Your polymer pre-coated spiral galvanized. Oh, wait a minute. They are con inspired. Okay, yeah. So your polymer pre-coated steel pipe, uh, twelve inches, nineteen fifty-seven a foot. Twenty-four inches, thirty-seven eighteen a foot, and forty-eight inches, seventy-four thirty-seven a foot.
Number five. Rejuvatech.
This is a rejuvenating and preservation seal, emulsions. The rejuvenating oil is a dollar eighteen a square yard. And, uh, reservation oil is two oh six a square yard.
Number six. This is for J. Kemp. For tiling services.
Yes, so the tiling service, six-inch tile, uh, slotted, dollar thirty-nine a foot. Installed, two thirty-five a foot. Their N twelve pipe, twelve inches, six sixty-nine a foot. Twenty-four inches, twenty-two thirty-nine a foot, and forty-eight inches, seventy nineteen a foot.
Or? For civil supply. Two Culvert types and other structures.
So, uh, this is for the N twelve also. Twelve inch, six thirty-five a foot, twenty-four inches, twenty-one oh seven a foot. Forty-eight inches, sixty-six oh six a foot. Let's have another one with metal top.
This is also for CivilCon. Two number seven. Pricey.
I'm just gonna pick the three sizes of pipe up compared to other people. So the N twelve pipe, twelve inch, eight oh six a foot, twenty-four inches, twenty-four thirty a foot. Forty-eight inches, seventy-seven eighty a foot. Other corrugated steel pipe. We'll do their twelve inches, eighteen dollars a foot. Twenty-four inches, thirty-six dollars a foot, forty-eight inch is ninety-seven fifty a foot. Polymer coated, twelve inches, twenty-six oh one a foot. Twenty-four inches, fifty-two oh two a foot, and forty-eight inch is one forty-two twenty-seven a foot.
Okay. Great Lakes Chloride. Item number ten.
Their calcium chloride, thirty-eight percent, dollar thirty-eight a gallon. Uh, forty-two percent calcium chloride, dollar forty-nine a gallon.
Is Rogers Group? Five, number six.
Some of their, uh, sand and gravel, uh, number twenty-three wash sand. Pick up at six dollars a ton. P gravel, twelve fifty a ton. Then on their stone. Uh, commercial fifty threes or four twenty a ton. Marshall seventy threes, three ninety-two a ton. Number eleven stone is eleven twenty a ton. And let's see. Number five stone, eight seventeen a ton.
Hey, this is for US aggregates. Item number six, crush stone.
Just picked up a quarry number five stone, seven dollars a ton. Is on eleven? Marshall fifty threes, six dollars a ton. Marshall seventy threes, eight dollars a ton. And no bid on elevens. N dot stone. They got N dot elevens, uh, seventeen dollars a ton.
Hey, this is Milestone.
So overlays, number nine surface. One thirty-seven a ton. Main line, number nine surface, ninety-four dollars a ton. Uh, main line, number five base. Ninety-six dollars a ton. AET Tac, five dollars a gallon. AETL, or AEP, sorry, prime, uh, nothing, sorry. And FOB, number nine surface, eighty-five seventy-five a ton. Uh, FOB, number eleven surface. That, actually, I'm I read that wrong. Eighty-five seventy-five.
No, you're doing fine. You're doing great.
We've got seventeen guys waiting on me to pay, so.
You can get your camera first.
Well, yeah. I think next time we won't do this the day after a holiday. I don't think that helps.
This is E and B paving?
Some of their overlays, number nine surface, uh, one seventy a ton. Main line, number nine, surface, ninety-nine dollars a ton. Main line, number five base, ninety dollars a ton. AET, four fifty a gallon. Uh, FOB, number nine, seventy-four fifty a ton. And FOB, number five base, is sixty-five dollars a ton. I think that's the same things I read off the last.
Okay. JJ's concrete. Three number four, number seven.
Uh, class A concrete, four thousand PSI, uh, one thirty-three cubic yard. Class B concrete, three thousand PSI, one twenty-seven a cubic yard. It was three, four, and seven?
Three, four, and seven.
Okay, the flowable field end dot, uh, sixty cement, sand thirty-one hundred, water seventy, eighty-three dollars a cubic yard. Oxtray. Oh, there they are. Wasn't in order. Do a ten by six. Five fifty-three section. Sixteen by eight. Nine thirty-two section. And a twenty by six is a thousand eighty-one a section.
Cave quarries. Six, crush stone.
Here come a quarry number fifty-three stone, eight dollars a ton. Seventy threes, eight dollars a ton. Elevens, ten fifty a ton. Number five, seven fifty a ton.
Cal car paving? Cal car paving?
Were they out of Jasper, I believe. So overlays, number nine surface, one fifty-eight a ton. Main line, number nine, one oh seven a ton. Main line paving, number five base, one oh five a ton. AET, five fifty a gallon. And F O B, number five base, seventy fifty a ton. And F O B, number nine surface, seventy-eight fifty a ton.
Or N T custom services?
I think that'd be oil. Oil and grease and stuff. Hydraulic oil in the bog, twenty-eight ninety-five a gallon. Anna freeze, you don't have anything on it. Multipurpose grease, seven forty-seven pound. Are we using, you don't have? Fifty W S A E oil is thirty-eight thirty-five a gallon.
Jones and Sons.
Class A concrete, four thousand P S I, one thirty-six cubic yard. Three thousand P S I is one twenty-eight a cubic yard. Their end dot, well, will fill sixty cement, thirty-one hundred sand, seventy waters, one thirteen a cubic yard.
Just make sure.
They may have the ended stuff on theirs.
On three and four, they say.
Actually, that's what their names were, if you start saying it.
So, any comments or questions from the audience?
Audience, are you ready? Lot to take in this morning, but good to hear some new, new names from vendors on there and very appreciated for all the bids that came in.
I guess more information than I do. You've done it for a couple more years than I did.
Good job. Project updates if you have any.
Yeah, and just get your recommendations, Chris, if you want to take that under advisement.
Yeah, so I'd say take all the bids under advisement and we can look at them and put some notes together and then the next meeting, we can actually award them.
Award them, okay.
Award the bids, it, it won't take long, I just need to go through it and put it all on a spreadsheet and then present it to you guys.
Yep, okay, so I'll look for, look for a motion to recommend, recommendation from the department to take all bids under advisement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, go ahead, Chris.
Under projects, I do have an L P A voucher for Kennebarger Road.
Ron there. All right, we've got an L P A claim voucher here in the amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-four cents with eighty percent reimbursable, seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. That is from Lot Miler Group on Davis County, Kennebarger Road, phase four, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Chris.
Hey, on the Kennebarger Road also, I think they've got all the concrete paving done, they've got all the asphalt shoulders done, which is the buggy crews and the driveways, and they're gonna bring a, a, what would you call it, a flush truck in, they're gonna bring a truck in, flush out all the culverts and driveways that kind of get sealed it in before the, the grass grows, and then they're gonna bring a camera in, and camera all the culverts and all the, all the, I guess, the box culverts and everything, make sure everything passed and nothing cracked or got broke down during construction. They're still working on, I think they got all the mailboxes in, they're gonna basically be working on guard rails today and tomorrow, and then they'll be doing seed and sodding still, trying to get the grass to grow, lines should be, they got it planned for next week.
Yeah, I was gonna say, next week's supposed to cool right off, so.
Yeah.
They won't, if it's below temperature, they won't spray that, will they?
Right, that's why, I, I talked to our consultant on site, and he was telling me that he, he advised the line guys that next week, the temperatures are gonna cool off, that, you know, they, they need to make sure it's the right temperature.
Right.
Before they plan to come spray the lines.
Are we gonna do the rest of the Kennebarger Road north, when they do that?
I haven't got a price on it yet, but.
Sure needs a.
I think it needs it.
That's.
I think that was what your recommendation was, and I think Phil, before me, had planned that in the project too, to, to get that done, so. So I've been in conversation with them about it. If they would've got it done last week, would've been a great week.
Yeah.
So moving forward, if it gets too cold to put them down on this section, we probably won't be able to fi- finish, you know.
Till spring.
Yeah, because we don't want to put them down and lose them.
No, I don't, because it's expensive anyhow, and the other road's been open for, I don't know how long it's been open, but most of the lines on the north sections are, were off already, so.
Yeah, it gets a lot of traffic, and they were, they're hoping, maybe in, well, they're saying the twenty-eighth, it said by Thanksgiving, I think.
Right.
But they're hoping in the next two weeks, they can have the signs down, the barricades, and just use temporary construction signs when they're finishing stuff here and there, and I seen the sheriff's department put something on the Facebook to kind of tell people it's still closed, to keep, quit going through there, but the, the contractors are saying there's a lot of.
Lot of traffic.
Lot of traffic, so if they could just bear with us for about two more weeks, they, they plan on having the barricades out of the way and letting the traffic through, there may be temporary closings while they're doing bits and pieces, but kind of where we're at on that. Guess I apologize about the, going through the bids, I was kind of in a hurry.
No, you're good.
Not good planning on my part.
No, we're good.
So we're, we're, we're at the four H grounds today.
Working, okay.
Yeah, our asphalt machine, our heat system kicked off, so we're bringing it up to heat, and I have one guy hurt, so, Rich, you know, he can't run the paper, so, run the paper for him.
What, uh, is the ground a lot better shape than it was last year then?
It is, we, we, we went in and did a lot of work. There's a couple of things that happened, but it's long stories, that they decided to replace the sewer line right through the middle of the parking lot, you know, during this project, which wasn't a, wasn't good planning. That didn't, that, that set it back a little bit, put the grounds in, we, we went in there and did a lot of work, Tom Boyd came in, and he brought an excavator and a dozer, and a skid steer and a couple guys, and a roller, and he donated a lot of time and work. He just showed up and had me go up there and tell him what we needed done, and he just did whatever we needed to, to prep it for paving.
Right.
Bob McGuire helped out as well, didn't he?
Yeah, and that's a good one, Bob McGuire, he's actually not, he's not on the board with the four H anymore, but I think when he was on the board, he, he helped prep the, the ground and did a lot of dozer work and got it sloped, and when our crews was there, he came up and, and basically asked if he could help, and so I thought I'd be a fool to tell him no. He's done it for a year or two.
For a long, long time.
So, so we let him help, help our crews with getting the right grade to make sure we have drainage there, and I know Ralph Holstein that does the concrete.
Concrete, yeah.
I think he came in and did some concrete ahead of time for us, so he wouldn't have to worry about where is this gonna go, where's this level, so.
I think the city helped out with the line, I think what had happened, the line had collapsed, and they didn't know that till very early, so I think that's why they replaced.
Is that the one through the Qantas, from the Qantas club?
Yeah, two years ago when they worked at the.
I know these have issues.
They, they replaced it from the cleanout to the four H building, but they never replaced it from the cleanout back to the Qantas.
Qantas club, yeah.
So they decided they needed to do that.
Slow it down, but at least, at least they got it done, we're not ripping up his asshole, so.
Yeah, we actually went in there and did it for them, we did the dig and the backfilling for them, to, to get it done and make sure.
Get the compaction right, yeah.
Yeah, to get the compaction, I didn't want to wait for another two years to let it settle. And I, I think that's it on the projects.
Sounds good. You have anything else for Chris?
Do not.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you.
Lot. All right, Steve, you up? You got security center rooftop A C units?
These invoices here, they're for some work that was done on the old system, so that the new system could link in and tie into it and work properly, I guess these V A V boxes, it's easier, it's more cost effective to just update them rather than replace whole box.
So then there's place blowers and actuators and then.
Correct.
Rollers too?
Yes.
It's like the same, just extra work on V A V boxes and seven thousand, five eighty-three. Are you guys asking commissioners pay for that, or is that on your line items, or what?
We're asking that this be paid out of the cumulative capital fund.
Okay. You got any questions for Steve, Ron?
Two invoices.
Two invoices.
One eleven, one eighteen.
That's correct.
Yeah, we got one at eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, and the second one, eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. I don't have any more questions, that should get you guys pretty well, hundred percent done now, right with A C units.
Squared away, yes.
Yeah, squared away. I don't have any issues with that, do you have anything, Ron?
No, don't make the motion to pay those.
Yeah, I got a motion for Ron to pay those out of cum cap, and I don't know what the total is there, but like I said, the ones, eleven, eighteen thousand, four thirty-nine, sixty-seven, second one, eleven thousand, five eighty-three, sixteen. Got a motion, Ron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thanks, Steve, appreciate it. All right. Got X soft, I remember, Danny Eaton? Morning, Danny.
Morning. How are you this morning?
Okay, plain.
Uh, what I've got in front of you is a website, a hosting site for a partial record cards for, it's an interactive searchable map, and it contains the property tax and the assessment data. The one that we have in system right now just does the partial cards, however, it's been discontinued, and we have to have one in place, so. The legislators have, had passed a law that we had to have this online July the first, which we used our old system, so we've got to continue that. This is a lot more improved, a lot better, you can go to this site and get everything that you want to see. All your sales, all your maps, you can fill out online forms.
And it's mandated by the legislature?
Well, to put it on, to have it on, connected to our county website, it's got to be available for every taxpayer, yes. And the annual maintenance is eight thousand dollars a year, comes out of the reassessment.
Any other questions for Danny?
Just your opinion, it's well worth the eight thousand dollars.
That might've been the wrong question.
Is anything worth anything anymore? Yeah, for what you're getting based on everything, what's going on, yeah, it probably is, it's more than what our old one was, but our old one didn't do anything except just put a partial record card on. Of course, taxpayers and everybody demands more and more public information.
Does it pick up many missed property?
Any missed.
Does it say somebody puts in a mobile home and doesn't notify the county? Does it pick up any of those?
Well, probably, the mapping part that it can, you know, if we use the map and go into the map, we can see on parcels, buildings and everything, of course, we only fly the county every three years. So if something happens after that, we can't see it on the map, but otherwise, we can, and we use the map a lot.
Anything else from number Danny? If not, look for a motion to approve X soft and the annual maintenance fee of eight thousand dollars, out of reassessment.
So moved.
I'm, got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Ron?
Uh, any updates on our compliance officer?
Not yet, no, I don't think.
Those properties aren't looking any better.
I know, we, I think we need to get, maybe re-advertise that and get some more candidates in here to interview again.
And then the only other thing I want to look at is our personnel, our office personnel at the county highway. Their salary personnel, when their wages are comparable, but they work forty hours a week rather than thirty-five, so I think we need to review that.
All right, sounds good. Anything else for the commissioners, anybody? Not look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims? Not look for a motion to, uh, pay payroll, pay claims and adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.